Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna read the sunshine compliance laws in the absence of Tracy Katz Levine.
Just a roll call first.
Okay, we have a roll call to order and roll call. Okay, may I have a roll call please?
Yes, Alexa Clark. Tracy Katz Levine. She'll be joining us. Tim Hoffman.
Here.
Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Here.
Ben Stoller.
I am present.
Ashley Schultz is not present. Richard Wasserman.
Here.
And Stephen Weiner.
And I am present.
Thank you. Wow.
Uh sunshine compliance statement. Notice of this of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting to the extent known was provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting following manner pursuant to the provisions of NJSA twenty-four dash six, the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting and all meetings in two thousand and twenty-four were provided to the township clerk posted in town hall and on the township website provided to the newspapers on December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. May I all ask you to please rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. The Sid mission statement. The purpose of the special improvement district is to promote, grow, and support local businesses, property owners, residents, and visitors. The mission of Milburn Township Sid is to encourage the economic, cultural, and social vitality of the township through increased marketing and visibility, improved and renewed infrastructure, and local business development and engagement. At this time, I'd like to ask for an approval of the minutes, public session November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. May I have approval of the minutes?
In motion.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes? What? Yeah, I'm off my game.
Second.
Second, it was Mr. Weiner.
Roll call, please.
Alexa Clark. Tracy Katz Levine. Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Yes.
Ben Stoller. Ashley Schultz is absent. Stephen Weiner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we are gonna have a presentation. We are, uh, want to welcome Mary Lima, the editor of Milburn and Short Hills magazine. Uh, we have in, in, uh, enjoyed a successful one-year partnership with Milburn and Short Hills publication. And we will now welcome Mary to the podium.
Oh, okay. So, thank you all for having me. I am thrilled to be working with this community. I love that word vitality because I feel like the mission of Milburn and Short Hills magazine is to really reflect the vitality in this community, which there is truly a lot of. Um, of course, to promote downtown because without our beloved downtown areas, we will not have that experience and we need to fight for our downtown, um, vitality at every step of the way. And, um, I'm very proud of the fact that we have, um, we have written about scores of restaurants in the, in just Milburn Short Hills, which is really, really nice. Um, so each issue, if you may have noticed, features a lovely local restaurant and, um, and also notable, you know, community members on the cover. We do original photography and it's a labor of love, truly. And without all of you, we couldn't really do it. So, we hope you enjoy it. We hope it's going to most of the residents and we're causing a buzz.
Well, uh, there's a couple of individuals that don't live in, uh, in Milburn Short Hills. So if you wanna leave a couple of extra copies, we would be sure to have them circulated. I know, I believe there's some in the reception area.
Every month.
Every month, but if you wanna leave a few, we'll make sure they, they get to where they need to be.
Does anybody have any questions? Is it, is it getting a thumbs up? Can we do anything better? Obviously, we're working, I think, um, rather beautifully with, uh, Explore Milburn Short Hills and they are supplying editorial each, um, each month, which really makes it a go-to for what is happening downtown. But if anybody has any recommendations, um, is it readable? I hope you find it readable. It's not really, it's not really pay-to-play. I know, like, you were always saying, oh, I wanna feature more businesses. Um, but we really wanna make it so that nobody throws it out and it really has the kind of content the community wants to read about. The kids that are excelling in school academically and sports and um, I think that's what kinda gives it that kind of community feeling. So, uh, but of course, we do, um, we do lots of stories about businesses, for sure.
I do, can you remind us the distribution of the magazines?
It's thirty-five hundred homes.
So it goes to mailed or?
It's mailed, it's direct mailed, and it's monthly, which is nice.
I know there's some people that don't receive it that have, yes, and, and is that?
You can always, you can always request.
Okay.
And it's, it's very easy to do that. Just, uh, shoot us an email. Um, I mean, eventually, maybe we can go to more as we grow and, and hopefully that will happen. Um, but right now, it's about, I would say sixty-five percent of the community. I mean, if that's based on the census, I mean, that's what the last census that is. Um, so sixty-five percent is a good amount, but, um, we look forward to maybe expanding that circulation, for sure.
Anybody else?
There's a question from your, our audience.
Yes.
Oh, that's right, yes. I just have one compliment.
I'll take a compliment.
I wanna tell you that I'm very proud that, that the gift guide that you did was business-oriented in Milburn Short Hills because most of these kind of magazines that do it are, you know, online websites that are not in the town. And I have to commend you for what you guys did. I think that's spot-on, perfect, and it's, it's necessary. I think it's a great idea.
Did you get a little traction? Possibly?
No, no, I don't know, that, I don't care about that.
You know, it's funny, but you know what's, here's a little story and I don't know, do I have one minute more? Only one? So.
One and a half.
So basically, um, I wish you had a concrete story. You were really, I watched this one, no, no, that's okay. But I happened to be in footnotes just because I'm, I'm working with somebody who's a new, uh, subtenant. And there I am and somebody is trying on the Sherpa sneaker that was featured in the gift guide. And I said, hmm, familiar. And of course, as she walked out, they didn't have her size, unfortunately, but, um, lo and behold, she came in because of the gift guide. Um, so I'm, I'm, you know, there's, there are other stories to that, to that.
Then you should be doing more posting online then.
I, we did post it online, I mean, how?
Yeah, but you should do more, like, like, you can, to get it out more like that, if you, that's what you're concerned for, my friend.
You can attend one of the seminars in January.
Exactly. I know he's, he's, he's wondering, he's hoping. Actually, if anybody does know of somebody who is in town, if you, be it, uh, one of your, um, you know, one of your kids that is aspiring to do digital media, we are looking for somebody. Thank you for that. We are looking for somebody to help us, um, you know, be at events and be on this, you know, be on the lookout for exciting stories. So, we are willing to put, um, the wonderful brand of Wainscot Media on their resume. Cause it's, it's a nice company.
I agree.
What's that?
A great idea would be a spotlight on maybe upper Milburn Avenue. Yeah, do multiple businesses.
Okay.
I was, I was gonna also recommend the, uh, maybe a story on our Main Street designation, which is which is really historic, uh, for the township.
I'm gonna speak about that a little bit.
I was going to say, I mean, I've been hearing about it and I'm not, I know it has to do with governor and we have the.
It opens the town up to a lot of grants and, uh, programs and opportunities and, uh, and only a few towns in the, in the state have that designation. And that was one of, that was something that, that Steve accomplished.
The cap of these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow. Well, you see, you know, we're gonna do a story on that and you just let me know how, um, how to craft that. But thank you, everybody, for your vote of confidence.
Go ahead, Jay.
Quick question. I want to a civic organization, the Short Hills Association. Um, and we're always looking to publicize some of the things we're doing. Would this be a venue that would be available and if so, how, how do we reach out to you?
Okay, um, I am, uh, I was actually going to bore you with my, one of my, my last publisher's note, letter from the editor. Um, but it really does talk about celebrating, um, the town in, in each issue. And I am always here as a, as a, um, my email's here, basically.
Jay, do you get the publication? Okay, well, I'm, I'm sure Mary can leave you with a, a copy.
Yeah, we have a copy. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Mary. Thank you.
I, I just wanna add one note about Mary and her team. Um, I've, I've had experiences with magazines like this, both in New York and New Jersey, these sort of regional commerce-type lifestyle magazines. First off, this is the only one that has not asked for money for content, which they come to us every month. We promote mainly the not-for-profits in town. So when the library's doing an event, the arboretum, Greenwood Gardens, whoever it may be, we always put that content in our, in our section. Also, Mary is at every event we do. I've never met a magazine publisher who actually comes to the community events they write about. So, thank you so much and it's been a very productive first year.
Thanks for coming.
Okay.
Thanks for the comments.
Okay, moving along, treasures report. Mr. Weiner, Mr. Grillo, and Amanda Dean.
Sure, um, I'll be brief. Uh, very quickly, the material is in your packet. It is attachment number two and I'll just read some highlights to you. The bank account balance as of December third was fifty thousand dollars, one hundred ninety-eight and ninety-nine cents. For the special assessment, kind of a year-end rap, uh, we've collected ninety-nine point five percent of the special assessment. It's about a little over one thousand dollars remaining. That's very, oh, that has been, perfect. So one hundred percent, excellent. Um, sponsorships, obviously, super successful year. Uh, so far, we've raised, so far, fifty-one thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and we have collected ninety-seven percent of that. So one check is due, I believe, which it's not overdue. I think it really, it's a more, more recent sponsorship.
So it's related to the winter, it's related, yeah, and it's related to the Winter Villages. So it was just, it just passed literally days ago.
Yeah, no, that's amazing. Um, so our total revenue amount collected, ninety-eight percent. The, the slightly new item, bottom left-hand corner of the report, uh, it kinda goes through an estimated year-end bank balance, so we're doing very well. We're gonna be around twenty-five thousand and change at the end of the year after paying everything. The township does, uh, owe us, uh, little under four thousand dollars related to expenses for the town hall plaza closure. So that's just in process of, um, so, sorry, we'll, we'll be receiving that very soon. That's it. Any questions?
You're part of the sponsor, so we can move on.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Stoller, township committee report.
Okay, well, I'm happy to announce that the two thousand twenty-five budget passed, uh, four to one, overwhelming support. We had sixty-plus letters of, uh, support by the community writ large. Uh, approximately ten letters in opposition, which were all basically a form letter, uh, uh, and such. And the responses across the board were fantastic. Couple of words on the KPIs I think were very robust and were very helpful in getting the budget passed. Of implementing those, putting those in place, continuing them, I think's gonna be fantastic. Uh, it's a, it's a good, uh, barometer of the success of our organization. The fifty-one thousand dollars in sponsorship absolutely helps a ton too with the, you know, that really shows the solidarity and the willingness of businesses to support, uh, the Sid and the Explorer. So it's that, nothing speaks like money, right? Follow the money and they're coming to support us. Uh, shop local, eat local, uh, be local. Uh, I was at the, uh, Winter Villages last weekend. I think we had over five hundred people there. Amanda was, uh, working her, her tail off, uh, fantastic. I even jumped in and put some wood in the fire pits, uh, and my three girls were home, so they enjoyed it as well. Uh, and just, I, I actually put a little post out on, uh, the Facebook and just tremendous response. Uh, people like to see people enjoying the town they live in. Uh, and, you know, that's what it's all about. Why live here if you can't enjoy it and have the economic vitality to support it? Um, also, as I'm going through here too, I went, you know, I have the, uh, subscription to the paper mill. Uh, the new, uh, uh, White Christmas is fantastic. If anybody's not seen it, I, uh, highly, highly, uh, say go see it. It's, uh, I can attest to how good it is.
Great, but I, can I just make a, a note to that? So if you guys, if you remember, uh, from every year, passing the budget is half the battle. We now have to collect the money. So between now and early to mid-February, um, I have a preliminary schedule from the clerk and the tax assessor. Um, they will, the tax assessor will develop what's called the Sid role. So that is every single property that's within the district, the assessment that they owe for this year based on the budget. It's a percentage calculation. Um, that will eventually be presented to the township committee. They adopt it and then the tax bills go out. So that all happens in the first quarter. Ideally, we start seeing money hit the bank account in April. Um, and that's why we always have the twenty thousand dollars set aside. Um, and then now that we do have an approved budget, we can receive twenty-six and a half percent of that, uh, from the township as well, which is allowed by state law and most departments get that. Um, so we'll be in good shape. Uh, we took care of that. It's just a little bit of process and procedure that I'll manage with the, with the tax assessor. But thank you again, Ben. You were a, an absolute fighter for our budget and, um, we really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Ben. Okay, um, Mr. Hoffman, business administrator's report.
Thank you. I've got no, no items to report on this evening, so I just wanna thank everybody for a wonderful year.
Thank you.
It takes first year with us.
It is.
You've made it.
Made it. It's been, it's been a great year. So it's been pleasure working with everybody.
Mr. Slattery, our attorney's report, please.
Sure, good evening, good evening, everyone. Um, so a few updates. First, on the bear properties matter. Uh, there is still no trial date and no further submissions to the docket, so that, um, case status remains unchanged from last time. We'll keep up with it and let everybody know when that changes. Um, the second item, you'll notice there's an attachment four, is the new, uh, model Oprah request form. Uh, as some of you may recall, there were changes made to the Open Public Records Act. Uh, and the state is requiring every public agency, which includes us, to adopt the official Oprah records request form. You don't actually have to do anything formal. You just make the record, the, uh, form available, uh, to anyone who wants to submit an Oprah request. And effectively, because of the changes in the law, in order to invoke the obligations that come with an Oprah request, there are certain boxes that must be checked, so to speak, literally on the form.
Literally.
Or, or via email or some other written format. So, um, it's highly recommended that the public use the Oprah form because then no one will forget to check all the right boxes. And the, um, the request can be denied on the grounds that you didn't comply. So using the form is the easiest and best way to, to, uh, get your request in. Uh, I believe the, this form, the one that's been formatted for us, will go on the Explorer website and be available to anybody who wants to get records from the Sid. And then I have, uh, one more item that's not on, on the agenda, but I think, um, Madam Chair, I think you wanted to talk more on Oprah for a moment?
Yes, I, well, I just, I asked Mr. Grillo to really, uh, to kind of look back and quantify the amount of requests that Explorer has received since two thousand and twenty-one, which is really the first full year, um, of operation and, um, there were forty-four request, Oprah requests. Forty-three of them were from the same three individuals. And the total cost, um, which exceeded, uh, eighty-one hours of manpower to address those uh, Oprah requests is somewhere in, in, in excess of four thousand dollars, north of four thousand dollars. So, I just wanted to put that in the record so everybody is aware, the amount of time, energy that, uh, is required.
We offer the, the information on what three individuals put in those forty-one requests or?
Uh, we, we, we can. We, well, we, we have that information and we can discuss that as well. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Hopefully, two thousand and twenty-four will be a little less, um, labor-intensive with respect to Oprah. I would hope springs eternal. So, anyway, so that's where we are. Anybody have any other, anybody have any questions from Mr. Slattery with respect to Oprah, Oprah requests? Formatting? Well, you'll have an opportunity. Um, this is, the, the questions are from the dais. You'll have a
During public comment.
During public comment. Thank you. Okay.
Uh, so, so I'm sorry to interrupt. One, one more item that's not on your actual agenda. I received today a memo from the township attorney
Yeah.
um, that I was asked to discuss briefly regarding the issue of whether the, um, township of Milburn is required to have a special improvement district in order to be eligible for the Main Street New Jersey program. Um, the township attorney looked into the, um, into that issue. I'm gonna summarize briefly what the analysis was and then I'll read the sort of conclusion. Um, so, so effectively, what they looked at is the statutory requirements for applications to the Main Street program, which include that the organization be a five oh one C three, C four, or C six, along with certain requirements regarding the makeup of the organization and its primary mission. Uh, the township attorney's review concludes that obviously we know we're a five oh one C three and our mission is, is, um, such that we do qualify for the Main Street New Jersey program. So, the, the end result is the Sid itself is not required to be eligible on its own for the Main Street program, but the applicant for the program has to be an eligible organization. And since the Sid is a rec, is recognized as a five oh one C three and, uh, served as the el, eligible applicant for the Main Street New Jersey program, they found no issues with the application or, or, uh, the, the, of the eligibility or the application. If there's any questions on that, I'm happy to take them now or, you know, obviously, if it's legal-based, we can save it for closed.
And that was a written legal opinion from the township attorney?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Babe, any questions? Thank you.
That's all for me. Thanks again for a great year.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dean, marketing and events report.
I'm gonna be as brief as possible. I do also wanna say, uh, we just finished events last Saturday, so it's been a little busy. So I'm gonna go over highlights, but I'll have much more detail for you as, and also with the annual report, so, um, thank you for your patience, uh, in advance. Um, in brief, we had our Halloween event. Uh, this was the second one we did. Um, we had multiple, uh, businesses participate at Town Hall Plaza. We also had some community organizations. The police actually came and like gave out little badges and stuff. Um, the library, um, and then we had, um, you know, State Farm and Oliver's Nannies has participated a lot this year. It's the first time they've participated with us. Um, we also started the, we're, we're getting really consistent with this. We did the shopper. It's, it wasn't a shopper card, but we gave these out and it was to engage, um, with the businesses so that the kids weren't just getting candy and walking to the next place. This was to get the families to go in and talk. So, this was very successful. They had to get a signature stamp. Um, and we collected their information, so that builds on our list as well for communications. Um, we had our face painting, uh, this year for the first time, which was great, a pumpkin patch. Trick or treating, we had two to three hundred people attend, um, closer to, I'd say, the three hundred mark. Um, so that was Halloween and, uh, then with the Kids Glow Crazy Holiday Dance Party at Short Hill Station on November fifteenth. Um, that went great. The, the glow party stuff is just a hit with the kids. Um, another thing that Oliver's Nannies did, um, they did, they, we essentially put together goodie bags and we gave out fifty of those and we gave out, uh, Snowflake Glow Ones. And so that was a lot of fun. It was next to Boxcar. Um, we had Glow in the Dark Games as well. And, uh, all right, holiday kickoff extravaganza. So, as you recall, um, this year we did this because there was one less shopping week between Thanksgiving and Christmas and Hanukkah. Um, we had three sponsors. We had over fifty businesses participate, um, DJs, um, uh, carolers, characters running around. We also did, again, this, this was a shopper card, so when you made a purchase, um, you, you'd get one of these filled out and then, um, we gave out three prizes to people. Um, gift certificates to the Sid business of their choice. Um, I think we did the same thing with the Halloween one as well. Um, and then, let me just see. We had good foot traffic. It was very windy and very cold that day. Um, I'm going to be surveying the businesses, but I wanted to wait till after next week because this was a kickoff event. It wasn't just about that day. So we wanna kind of gather the information about how everyone did for, you know, the last four weeks or so. Um, something we invested in this year was, um, we always, we've been working with influencers for almost two years. We worked with Finding Francesca. Would you mind pulling that up? So, um, we had a curated visit with her. I spent the, the day with her and her assistant. Um, we, we featured three businesses that were, um, on, uh, upper Milburn Ave and Short Hill Station to try and give them some love out there. And, uh, wanna play real quick? It's, it's about a minute.
Just make sure you take off the mute. Is it, uh, the?
They got the what?
Mute at the bottom, yeah, yeah. And then you press pause.
We checked out Schultz and Blaustein to try on fur coats and outerwear. They're celebrating their hundredth anniversary with fifty percent off everything until the end of December. We built up an appetite after all that shopping.
There we go.
All right, we're still on mute.
We're still on.
Jersey for their holiday extravaganza. Milburn is such a cute and charming town with dozens of small businesses, perfect for holiday shopping. We started off at Elements for Style, a beautiful gift shop with high-quality decor items. Then we went over to Ufizi Moda to try on designer clothing and browse their curated gift selection. We checked out Schultz and Blaustein to try on fur coats and outerwear. They're celebrating their hundredth anniversary with fifty percent off everything until the end of December. We built up an appetite after all that shopping, so we went to Jack's Serpenter for lobster rolls, which I highly recommend. Then we stopped at Kane for Living to design DIY charm bracelets. They're another great option for gifts and decor. And if you're looking for some unique wines, check out Unwined Boutique. We sampled some of their wines and cheeses and they were amazing. And on our way out, we stopped at Taylor Park. The Bowers Center is decorated beautifully for holidays. So shop local in Milburn Short Hills this holiday season.
Um.
How many followers does she have?
So she has a hundred and seventy-three thousand followers.
And every time I walked on, I couldn't escape that video. It chases you too.
She has a lot of mojo.
Yeah, I love that algorithm.
Yes.
Algorithm chases it.
Twenty-five thousand views of the reel, uh, eighty-nine comments and at this time, five hundred and thirty-two likes. So, um, but besides the coverage, they were awesome to work with. Um, we went to places that weren't on, part of the contract, uh, for lunch. We went to Jack's and she included them. She didn't have to. Um, we also stopped at, she wanted to go to Casa de las Napas while we were walking through, um, and, uh, it, it was just great. Um, so I, I think we could definitely work with them again. I feel like they're a good girls' night out kind of thing. And, uh, I, I think that's it. So I think this was the right event to do this for. Um, and again, this was the kickoff for shopping. So this was another kickoff for the holiday season. Um, any questions? Um, all right, and then Winter Villages. So, uh, they were on December seventh and fourteenth from four to eight P M. Um, we had nine sponsors, um, Explorer's being one of them for the smores. How many do you think?
Seven hundred and fifty marshmallows. So, so, yeah, we were told to prepare for what, four or five hundred people?
Per, per day.
Yeah, yeah.
Seven hundred and fifty per weekend.
For, per, yeah, I'm sorry, per one, per four-hour session. Yeah. Yeah, each night, yeah. It was, it was pretty incredible.
And you, and so the cold, it was cold the second night. And you, and so the cold, it was cold the second night, but it didn't impact attendance at all.
No, no.
Um, so yeah, so that's just one testament to that.
Oh, we had three people there working and they were busy, you're like handing out, yeah.
It's the marshmallow KPI.
We have, we have more. But no, it was, it was great, I think having it at Town Hall Plaza gave us a lot more room and we we needed that. Um, some other highlights, uh, Dunkin Corporate came, they had, um, they were on the fourteenth and they brought this massive.
Really amazing, I mean.
Uh, we can't, we can't thank Dunkin enough for what they did, the hats, the gift cards, the.
Incredible.
Joy they picked up inside, I mean, they had the the lights going, the truck, the Jeep. Everything, it was just amazing and people were lined up and everyone was very appreciative of the Dunkin Corp. Um, in fact, if you can give me his information, I'd like to send him a personal note.
Sure, absolutely.
Just, they they went above and beyond, and it's good to see when big corporations back back the CID like that.
Yeah, the CID, and that's, it was so nice cuz we have the Dunkin here, um, the other, um. Other sponsor that was, it it was nice, we had one one weekend, one the other, so the first weekend, Wunder sponsored. And um, they had a whole setup, they brought in an old school. Like pickup truck that you see on almost every holiday thing with the tree on top and did, um. Uh, photo ops there, they gave out um treats and things like that, so that was like the nice bookend to that as well, um. Jax was selling uh hot chocolate and soups and uh and then wine, uh, we had Boll and Bear Brewing there. Um, and then we had several businesses participate each uh each day with. Tableting with either activities or giveaways, that kind of thing, uh, just a couple of them to note, Architectura. Um, was there Art of Problem Solving, was they're both nice and they said it was just awesome for engagement for them. Uh, Her M D came the um, the second weekend and then. Coding for Good, which is a group from Mil- Milburn High School, was there for, they did a bake sale on the. Second day, which was great and they've helped us with public art, um, as well. Also Holla Studio, which is a new business on um Milburn Ave next to Spotless Dry Cleaners. They did uh three dance performances on, was that the four?
The fourteen.
Yeah, and it was, the first one was like the little kids and then it was like the teens and it was, it was the moms and it was. It was really sweet and I think it really helped welcome them and give them some traction, just opening up. Um, again, over five hundred people in attendance each day, um, we also did. So this time, this was more about information gathering, but similar cards, uh, we collected a hundred and sixteen. Fifty-one of those, um, let me just read this, so forty-four percent were from Milburn. Uh, twenty-two percent from Short Hills and then the other thirty-nine percent, we have to still do the data input, um, thirty-four percent. Either did not give us a zip code or they're from other communities, so I'll have that together for you for the next meeting.
Hello, are we capturing emails and?
Yeah, so almost everyone had an email, not everybody gave us their zip code. Uh, the questions we asked were, what town, is this your first visit? Um, if you attended in the past, which years, they could just circle it, how did they hear about it? And then their first, last name and email address, so. We ran out of cards to the point that Tracy had people, they were starting to write them on the backs of the other ones, so it was really good participation. Um, so again, I'll be sharing that with you. Let's see, any uh, any questions about?
Big shout out to Dr. Shaw and Sweet Tooth, she, you know, she shows up to everything, she sponsors everything.
Yeah.
You know, really a great business and hopefully they do fantastic and welcome to the town. Uh, but she comes out and uh, you know, talks to everyone.
Brings her mascot, her dog with her.
Her her little pooch.
Yeah, and and what she did, as several of the igloo sponsors did, is they actually had giveaways in the evening, so she had these little kits together with. Toothbrushes for the kids and things like that and they all, they all went.
So yes. Can I add, at, when I came at two P M about to set up our tent?
Yeah.
Amanda and Steve are there working, they've already set up everything, caring woods, I mean, it was, it was amazing, I know it takes. A ton of hours, both before and after, and it wouldn't happen without both of you, it's amazing.
Thank you.
And thank you, your team, cuz you guys were working hard.
Yeah, and we we had, we had some help, um, it also helped too that we were able to set up the day before, it's just too much to do in one day. So that was another thing, um, about having it in Town Hall Plaza for two weeks, is we could leave it, we didn't have to move it and start over again. Um, so that was a kind of a lifesaver, um, moving on to holiday decor and lighting, uh, can you pull up that? So this is just a quick reel that, um, we did to showcase the lights and then I'll just give you a little more detail.
Oh god, this guy.
Yeah, I'm the one that has to film.
We're at Sparkville, Burn Short Hills, here at the corner of Main and Essex, at one of our numerous. Holiday decor light locations, we have new lights at the Bower Center, at the gazebo with Taylor Park. Here at the clock tower, we've got them over on Short Hill Station as well as Upper Milburn Avenue at. The courtyard here in downtown, and so we want you to come out, enjoy the beautiful light displays on the ground. Shop and dine local, support our local businesses, and a special thanks to the team at Town Hall. Who made this before ever possible in partnership with Inspire.
So just some highlights of that, um, so those are meter lights, string lights, um. And then we had multicolor lights on the Bower Center and the snowflake light in front of Jax. Plus the DPW does the um, the poles uh in the downtown, the clean uh Complete Streets Pass. Uh, we use three different installers, DPW did uh everything at Clock Tower Plaza and then we split the difference with. Uh, the courtyard and the other locations with two other companies. Um, to, we did that to see how it was working with both of them. So that going into next year, we'll have more information on how to, you know, make a decision who we wanna work with. Um, this was an effort that what started in April, May, so. Um, so Tim, myself, Alex, uh, John, um, and Tom from DPW and it's just, it was an effort. Um, but everyone shipped in and um, this is the first phase of this, so there's a lot more that's gonna be coming, we're gonna be kind of. Doing a postmortem in January, um, and then we'll be kind of going from there. Um, something I do wanna say to, um, is. I think all of you know, we, the the chamber, just to put clarification, the chamber is the one that was doing the winter walk. Not us, not the township, um, I think there's a lot of questions out there. And um, some of the limitations we run into, especially in Upper Milburn Ave, with there's infrastructure challenges, especially with electricity. Um, so those are all things we're gonna work um to to navigate more. But I think, I think we really accomplished a lot this year, um, so we're really proud of what we, what we did, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I I think I should do without saying that, you know, you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. So everyone, I I remember the comments on the snowflakes, they're decrepit, like the gold and this, and now they're not there and I went, oh, we missed the snow. Uh, but fantastic job, I love that video, I would get that video out there more, um, if we can.
We can repost it.
Yeah, and and maybe some music with it, you know.
Yeah, and just the understanding of the Chamber of Commerce is my understanding to do anything this year.
No, they did have to.
So, you know, people have to understand, there's different organizations that are doing this and what was built from. They're virtually scratch, and we started talking about it in April, I still remember the conversation, to get to this point, you know.
Is noteworthy, yes.
No easy task and it's only gonna get better from here, but you know, as people. You know, it just like damned if you do, damned if you don't, so, uh, good job.
Yeah, and one thing I will say too is, um, when we started this project, I had my summer intern Jonathan, who lives here. Um, he's a a senior now and he was out with me helping make estimates to start. And now he's walking around, I saw him, he helped me this week with the project and he was like, it was so cool. To see that come to life, so that, that's, it's just like another nice thing about that.
Mm-hmm.
But that's uh, that's all I have, so.
Great. Okay, executive director report, Mr. Grillo, new businesses, the closed businesses?
Yes, Madam Chair, so we had three new businesses open this month since our last meeting. Uh, Amanda mentioned Holla Studios, that's H O L L A. Uh, there next to Spotless Dry Cleaners at the intersection of Milburn and Lackawanna, they had, the property owner actually subdivided that property. Um, so Spotless used to be two storefronts, now it's one, now the dance studio is in that second one. Um, and they specialize in teenage dance classes, including uh focus on K-pop dance, which is uh Korean dance music. Um, and they did a great show for us last weekend. Um, Artistry by Andrea is a uh eyelash and eye threading location, it's a above moonshine. Where Chris Jordan Photography is, so there's a little suite of offices up there and then Monocle Group. Which is a real estate consulting firm, is actually located now across the street in Schoolhouse Plaza. Um, and then we did lose one business this uh month, unfortunately, our friends at New Mooney Baby uh are gonna be concluding business at the end of the month. Um, they do have a big sale going on, if anybody's looking for any Christmas items, it's fifty to seventy percent off the whole store. Um, so uh, kids' gifts, uh, kids' games, clothing, everything, huge sale, um. But we wish her the best, there is, there's already a lease in place uh to replace her. Uh, it'll be another clothing store uh run by a another entrepreneurial uh young lady. And so we're excited to see how that turns out, but I'll be in touch with her uh in the next week or so, once their their lease is. All buttoned up and ready to go, so that'll be a one for one kind of switch.
Steve, is that, is Verizon, is that old news, that Verizon store?
I I think the Verizon was in the November report, but yes, they are relatively new. Um, yes, there's a Verizon at two ninety-six Milburn, which uh used to be the Just Collect Card Store next to F forty-five.
It's a little weird that the Just Collect sign is like still on the building.
It's weird, yes.
Who's responsible to take that?
Property owner. The the property owner is uh. The property owner is the son of an owner who died suddenly. And so I think the son is trying to figure out what it means to be a commercial property owner, so I'm just glad he had the lease done.
Yeah.
And and if I'm, if I'm correct, he lives, he does not live, uh, he he's an out of state residence. The property owner, am I correct?
I don't know.
Okay.
Is it possible he doesn't realize that sign is?
It's possible, I will happily check into them, I I have his contact info.
Steve, a question I have from a business standpoint is, I guess, um, we now have the big three in downtown, but we also have the big three, uh. T-Mobile, Verizon, A T and T at the mall as well, how do they avoid that conflict? Is there a conflict?
I I don't know, I wonder, I I, no one's ever asked me that before, um, I wonder if it's just serving two different communities. Um, you know, obviously if you're going into the mall, it's probably a different experience, I doubt you're going specifically for that use. Right, it's probably something you're doing while you're doing something else, I wonder if those uses in in the other. Parts of town are, or in the bid are more use specific, but I don't know, no one's ever asked me that, I don't know.
There is a, uh, there's a rule that says that, you know, any of the big stores cannot also have a store downtown.
Yeah.
So I'd love to understand that, cuz maybe that's a way to bring in some other flagship stores downtown. Uh, whatever they're doing to kind of. How they're doing.
Well, Liv, does Liv still have something in there?
They have, yeah.
And then Sugar Bear also has one in the mall and downtown.
Downtown to the mall, not from the mall downtown.
Sugar Bear?
No.
Liv.
Oh, Liv.
I think that, but Sugar Bear did the opposite, they went from the mall to downtown. I don't know, I'll look into it, I don't know what the rule is, but I'll certainly.
Is it Verizon store, is it a corporate store or it's a like an authorized?
I think it's an authorized dealer.
Yeah, I feel like this just, this, I don't know that that makes a difference, but I think the store in the mall is like a corporate and the one in town is a.
Yeah, that might be the difference.
I think it's the same thing, one and the same, authorized and such.
I'll look into it, it's a good question.
Not true.
No, it's not, they're separate, very different. I I, yeah, I I know when I tried to upgrade my phone. And yes, uh, well, it was much, um, it was a third party and the, uh, yeah, it was. The services, it it was not, they're not.
Verizon.
Yes.
Verizon or unauthorized.
Yeah, I have A T and T, so I I don't know much about that.
I went through that with A T and T near where I live, I went to the local location and then I had to go to the Rockaway Mall location, so it was. Was not convenient.
Um, so then, uh, th- this list is, looks long, but it won't be, I promise, um, so the business advocacy report. Uh, I attended the League of Municipalities Conference uh early in November, um. And uh, that's that's for those of you who don't know, that's a statewide conference for. Pretty much anybody in government, economic development, you name it, in the state of New Jersey. Uh, it's been going on, I think it was the hundred and ninth year, I think this year. Um, obviously, I saw a lot of our friends, Tim and I and a whole bunch of folks. Um, went to a lot of really great conferences related to uh the work that we do. Um, downtown New Jersey hosted a seminar for economic development professionals. A great session by the New Jersey E D A, the Economic Development Administration. Um, they have six programs out right now, which we've been promoting and will continue to promote. Um, for small businesses, so there's a small business lease grant where they will pay twenty percent of your annual lease payment. Um, small business improvement grant, they'll pay fifty percent of all eligible costs related to capital improvements, up to fifty thousand dollars. Uh, for any small business, the e-commerce program, which you know is the free website program, um, that many businesses here have taken advantage of. Um, and there's also a couple of other funds and lending programs to give preferential lending to small businesses, so. We're gonna continue to get that word out, we've been doing it week after week in our, in our weekly email, but. Um, you know, it's it's a great situation that we have here with New Jersey and the N J E D A, um, there's a lot of free money sitting out there for for small businesses. Um, I also attended the Main Street New Jersey uh discussion. Um, which talked about, now that we are a Main Street community, uh, we are actually eligible for a whole bunch of uh technical assistance. Both from the state and the national offices, um, and so, you know, this is really for for Ben at the T C level. Um, now, because we're admitted into the program, eligible free local planning services, master plan. Reviews, including pedestrian uh access planning, any downtown revitalization or economic development strategies the town might wanna do. Redevelopment or rehabilitation plans, as well as development of an abandoned property list. Um, the state will all do that for free, now that we're in the Main Street program, so, um, great services that we have available. Um, they're also, they can offer traffic and pedestrian counts, should we wanna do that, um, so tons of of great stuff there. Um, I did attend a couple of other sessions, one was on social media for municipalities and related entities. That was really interesting, there's been two cases in the last two or three years about municipalities and. What they can say on Facebook, what they can't say, what, who can be blocked, who can't be blocked, what is subject to Oprah, what isn't. Um, and we had a great training session on that, um, it applies to us as well, it's a quasi-governmental entity, so. Um, I learned a lot there and then also I attended a session about Oprah, uh, that was hosted by the Executive Director for the New Jersey Government Records Council. Um, it was a really terrific session and talked about this new form that's been adopted and how. Um, some of these major changes in in the form and what's allowed. Some some new things, um, if a record has not changed, but it's already been provided. Um, you know, some people will ask over and over and over for the same record, if we've already given it to you, but it, and it hasn't changed, it can be denied. Um, there's new rules related to timelines with commercial purposes, um, as well as, um. New rules, if there's extension, or if there's issues related to technical problems, like if somebody can't open a file, because zip file, for instance. Um, there's a whole set of processes and procedure that we can find, so, um. I think, I think Oprah's getting better, um, in terms of how folks like us that are responsible for producing those records. Um, can be assisted in not having to necessarily, you know, do everything immediately, um, we can. Um, we're we're covered a little bit better, so that was a good session, um. And then Jackie's gonna talk about the downtown New Jersey annual conference.
Yes, so.
It's conference season in New Jersey.
Conference season, yeah, I I would, you and I talked about it, uh, to have the downtown New Jersey conference in December. Was perhaps not the best time, given the. The uh robust scheduling and of of businesses and and individuals during that time.
There's about fifty CID directors there, they pull their hair out.
Because they were, you know, coming and going, coming late, leaving early for a variety of events, so. Uh, the annual conference, December fourth, it was held in Montclair. Uh, this was the first time that I have ever attended a downtown New Jersey conference, which is separate and apart, I I had. In my previous capacity, I had been to the league several times. Um, this is the statewide organization made up of CIDS, economic development offices. Elected officials, as well as private sector professionals. Our executive director is on the board and as well as the CID Policy Committee. Was, I was very grateful for the opportunity to listen, engage with a full slate of leaders in the, our community. That are at the forefront of providing hands-on resources and recommendations to enhance our local communities. In particular, there was a plethora of information regarding bids. Also at that meeting, uh the Main Street New Jersey winners were also um. Noted for their uh, for their leadership, Hamilton, Plainfield, Princeton, and Milburn. Yeah, so we were in in an elite group. Um highlights of the workshops that were on during the day, they uh they focused on uh enhanced engagement. Winter markets, art installation, and music performances, all of which we have participated in and will continue to expand. And explore, they also noted the importance of additional voices at township committee meetings. Planning, zoning, and TC to voice opinions, add value, and cut through perhaps some of the red tape. Uh I believe the expansion of our review committee will allow us to take a more proactive stance. It also discussed was the need to expand residential housing in our downtown. As a driver of economic development and vitality to our business community. As we've always said, we are lucky in Milburn that this Explore is more than just an event and marketing Sid. We have significant involvement in a variety of economic development and policy discussions with our stakeholders. And that was uh a another um stronghold or keynote um partner with the existing stakeholders. The Chamber uh to leverage resources, share common goals, ideas. Um recognize that chambers are are not built like SIDS and cannot typically provide the same kind of events. Um chambers are membership-driven organizations and are allowed to lobby. Um there are five oh one C six and are allowed to lobby when SIDS cannot, and are more local level um focused. Um. Highly functioning chambers have core competencies, technical assistance, networking, and also support home-based businesses. Um also mentioned was uh the twenty twenty-six World Cup. Um programming and events surrounding that, New Jersey Veterans Chamber, African American Chamber, Hispanic Chamber. All um. Uh all spoke and uh as valid partners to engage and expand programs. The NJEDA, which we are intimately familiar with in in Milburn Short Hills, educational seminars, grants. This was also very interesting, um the idea of uh our arts and cultural committees. Uh applying separately for a five oh one C three designation to secure grants. For innovative programming and installations, so um that was. With a in interesting um a pivot, an interesting pivot. Um I also wanna uh share that today, uh Jeff Buhler, who is the current Assistant Director. Of New Jersey Business Outreach Center. Um Steve received a letter from him today. Um commending him on the magic of Town Hall Plaza, quote unquote. And that he is already going to use it as an example of best practices. For a city in South Jersey, so he just wanted to let us know that he really thought that our work was quote unquote top-notch. And after the downtown, there was, there will be an article in Downtown New Jersey. That speaks of um our Town Hall Plaza Winter Villages. Uh it will be in a news, in electronic newsletter that goes out. Um and we will, we'll be linking our social media page to our readers so that. Um we can continue to spread the word. Um Jeff Buhler is a uh is a recognized leader in the New Jersey business community. He ran Main Street, New Jersey for over twenty years, he is a um. A very esteemed leader and to get this kind of notoriety is 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 noteworthy and should be recognized, so. Thank you, Mr. Grillo, just add that to the um the kudos list, cause this is this, this will go to the top of twenty twenty-five. Um okay, so that's my, oh, um if you all wanna just take a look, I'm pivoting back. The Hoboken Kaleidoscope mural. Um is, you can look at it online, which is sort of an eclectic. Um example of artwork, um something that we can continue to look at with our Cultural Engagement Committee in Town Hall Plaza. Um and that uh also something mentioned, the space that we were in in Montclair. Was in the building, for those of you know, that was the old movie theater on Bloomfield Avenue. And they've turned it into a really spectacular event space. Um it's got exposed brick walls, it's 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 really quite beautiful, the lighting is it. So one of the things mentioned uh in these discussions is the need to perhaps repurpose second floor office space. Um versus converting it, you know, or converting it to an event space. Secretly, I will tell you, that was my hope and expectation for the Milburn Movie Theater, but um it got scooped up before. But that's the kinda thing that maybe we should be continuing to look at. Um and put that on our radar, because quite frankly, we don't really have that kinda space in Milburn. And I think, I think we could have a very big draw for for events, so.
Is that a privately owned space, or?
Yeah, privately owned.
So someone.
Yeah, so so if if the real estate, somebody, yes, um something to think about. Questions?
Hey, I have a question for for Steve. Steve, now that we're part of Main Street, we're recognized and and uh now that we have a designation. And I know out of out of what the chair has just spoken about, all these programs and and opportunities that we have. Do we, do we have, do you have the staff, the resources to apply for? For, I mean, I imagine there's dozens and dozens of of grants and opportunities that now we can bring to the town, or we can apply for. You're, you have a limited, I mean, you have so much on your plate as it is, I guess my question is, how do we, how do we as a group? Focus and say, okay, we're we're gonna look at all these grants. I mean, do you, do we wanna consider, or maybe do, are we looking for a recommendation from you? How do we enable you or empower you to have enough help to look at these grants? And say, you know what, there's ten of these things that we should bring to, you know, the Sid, and we should bring to the town. And 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 what, and if you need resources or extra staff, you know, those those are worth applying for, those, that's worth bringing. Uh I don't know, bringing an assistant in to to focus on those things.
I I think there's a three-part answer to that, which is first off, you know, when we're pursuing. Private foundation grants, which we, as we've talked about before, we don't have a lot of success with, uh because of our our income. Um staffing is always a nice thing to ask for, um I don't think we need a lot of programmatic money, we need staffing money. Um the the second part of that is uh the township, you know, we need to work together so that the township knows. That there's all these free resources we're now eligible for.
Right.
Um and so obviously, I'm gonna work with with Alex and and the engineering team to say, you know, there's stuff the state can do for us for free.
Right.
Let's make sure we're exploiting that. Uh the third piece is, um and we've talked about it before, about Main Street, is that volunteerism is a huge aspect. We will have to report on our volunteer hours every year, um and so that is coming out and helping us set up the Winter Villages. It could also be working through a grant with us, you know, Jackie spent an enormous amount of time working with me on this grant app, on on the Main Street application itself. That would have counted towards it, and so I think as we begin to formulate our plan for the Main Street program, and what we're gonna do in twenty twenty-five. Based on what the state is offering, um I very well may lean on the board to say, you know, we could really use some help here. Um brainstorming and having strategic planning sessions and actually editing documents, because that, those documents are the things that are gonna get us the awards.
Right, terrific, yeah.
Hi, Mom?
Okay, yes, you're up, Main Street, New Jersey Press Room.
Yes, so you you you've heard all about it, um but it is attachment five, it came out after our last meeting. So this is from the Governor's Office and the Department of Consumer Affairs, uh uh Community Affairs, I should say. Um and as Jackie mentioned, three other communities in Mercer Union and Camden Counties were included, so. There's your copy to read all of our quotes from myself and Jackie and the mayor. Um couple of quick business items, uh there was something that that we had put out a while ago. Related to the Federal Corporate Transparency Act, it's a federal law that requires that essentially every small business, that's an LLC. Um enroll in this program through the Federal Crimes Enforcement Network. Um the the goal is to combat money laundering, terrorist financing, corruption, and tax evasion. Now, of course, banks are exempt from this, but we gotta worry about, taste buds. Uh so it's 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 a bit of a ridiculous program, however, there was a pretty severe penalty if you did not register, so we shared that with our business community. Um in, I think, late, probably late November, um there was an injunction. Um that went into place in the federal court in Texas, I believe, ten days ago or so. Um so I don't know what's going to eventually happen, we're gonna keep an eye on this, but obviously, we're gonna keep people informed. Um they do not need to apply now, the application process has been suspended, you've already applied, that's fine. Um but we'll wait to see what the federal courts decide to do, um but if it does come back into play, then businesses are gonna be required to do it to avoid a a. A cash fund. Um also, just a friendly reminder, business parking permits are for sale here in Milburn. Um so if you own a small business, or if you own any business, and you uh need to park in a municipal lot, please get a parking pass. There's a whole variety of them that we've structured. Um parking is not allowed on the street, if you're a business owner or a business employee, please get a parking pass. Park in our parking deck, park in our municipal lots. Um there's also the famous shopper parking pass, which is great, it is a flat fee for the year. And you do not need to worry about ever putting your money or using the app on the meter. Um and so you just pull over, park the car, go shop, so please get your parking passes, whether they're your business passes. Or your shopper passes, and we'll be getting that information out as always. Um and then we did talk last meeting about the Business Advocacy Subcommittee, um which was to deal with, we had said sort of quirks and codes and things like that. Um we were gonna set that up as an individual committee, but we had an executive committee meeting, a lot of committees. And um the executive committee said, you know, it's probably best just to combine that with our advisory board. Um because most, that was gonna be comprised mainly of the advisory board anyway. So instead of creating two committees, we're just gonna have one committee, and that'll be an agenda item that we'll discuss, so we'll give you feedback on that. Um as the year progresses. And then finally, um in terms of administration, uh we do need to take a vote on Attachment Six, which is in your packets. Um that is the schedule for twenty twenty-five, um and then at the January meeting, I'm gonna be presenting our annual report. I'll close out the KPIs and the twenty twenty-four success tracker, um and then we're also gonna give you a presentation. Of the master schedule and service plan that Amanda and I are working on, um and so you'll have a full calendar of events, et cetera. So with that, if everyone could please review Attachment Six. Um it's a pretty standard, it's usually the last Thursday of the month. Um and it will be six thirty PM here, with the one exception being the five thirty PM annual meeting in October. And uh as usual, July and August, there will be no meeting.
May have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five Explore Milburn Short. Yes, sure.
Uh since I am on eight committees, have you, has this been uh sanitized with the other committee meetings?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And also one question, five thirty for the annual meeting, is that, is that?
Because it's a longer meeting, that's why, that's that's that, we've always had that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's our budget here, I got it.
Yeah. Um may have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five Explore Milburn Short Hills meeting schedule.
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
I used to do a voice vote.
Voice vote, voice vote, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay.
All right, I'll get that published.
Thank you. Okay, moving along. Um. Public comment. The public is invited to provide comments and ask questions at this point in the meeting. Those utilizing Zoom or phone will also have the opportunity to speak, clearly state your name. Uh whether or not you are a resident, speak into the microphone and limit comments to three minutes. Prepared statements may be sent to Tracy, T R A C Y, at exploremilburnshorthills.org. Please remember, this is a business meeting and professional decorum must be maintained. If a speaker engages in disorderly conduct that disrupts the meeting, or is meant to intimidate attendees. They will be asked to cease their public comment. All questions must be directed to the chair at the conclusion of public comment. Members of the board may respond or ask staff or attorney to do so. Staff and attorney will not answer questions without a request from board members. Okay, let's open up public comment. We'll take it first from the audience, and then we'll go to Zoom if we have any on. Okay.
Quick question, before you set the start the timer, we have a joint prepared statement we'd like to read, it runs. Approximately six minutes, do you prefer we split it into two, or we have one person read it both?
So, Tim?
Uh why don't we have one person read the whole and um we'll adjust the timer if we could?
It'll just run twice.
Okay, that's fine, can we not have the break in the, okay, all right. Okay, we'll run twice.
And I'll save my Oprah question as uh we will be pretty close, if not slightly above time limit, so.
Okay.
Jay Moriale, Short Hills resident, I'd like to start by thanking the board members for volunteering their time and service to the our community. Several of you have also served in many capacities in our town, so thank you for that. Um and we'd like to pass along our congratulations on passage of the Sid budget Tuesday night, while we were not there, we watched it and. Were happy to see that, the city's done many good things, um many were mentioned Tuesday night, I'll single out Town Hall Plaza. While there were many naysayers when this was first proposed, the TC persevered and the Sid did a fantastic job. It was a brilliant move, why? Not just because it resolved the issue of closing a major traffic artery and addressing resident safety concerns. But it also became a much more friendly, family-friendly venue. We moved to Milburn in two thousand and three from London, and like almost everyone we know that moved here. We came here because of the school's transportation in New York City and proximity to Newark Airport. Milburn first and foremost is a family community, from the investment in the schools, the recreational programs, the pool, the golf course. And the businesses supporting family needs. Town Hall Plaza is a reflection of the residential and family orientation of our town, in fact. That orientation is stated in our own master plan, which has as goal one. Encourage appropriate land uses that promote the character of the township as a small suburb of the highest quality. Objective one oh one, protect the character of established residential neighborhoods. Yes, there are other objectives, but doesn't goal one, objective one, being the very first one listed, count just a little bit more? And while our children are grown and no longer live in town, they frequently visit, and our grandchildren now enjoy the benefits. Milburn offers like Town Hall Plaza, the pool, and the parks. With all that said, we are deeply concerned with comments made at the last two Sid meetings regarding zoning changes. Which would have a dramatic impact on the quality of life for those living near the B two and B three business district. Milburn is somewhat unique and having nearly a two-mile stretch from Saint Rose to Walgreens and up to Benihanas. Where commercial buildings either directly abut or are extremely close to the properties of single-family residents. Prior to COVID, residential property owners were somewhat protected with the use restriction for restaurants within a hundred and twenty-five feet. Unfortunately, we lost that protection when developers and commercial property owners petitioned the TC to change zone. Change that zoning and succeeded. We used the prior protection to successfully challenge the opening of a fast food restaurant. That was within forty-three feet of a home of one of my neighbors two doors down. Here in this, here is an excerpt of the finding of the zoning board, the board notes and finds. That the building and shopping center where the Jersey Mikes is proposed to be located. At just over forty-three feet from the nearest residential lot is a mere thirty-five percent of the setback requirement. And is too close to dwellings for the preferred use, the proposed use specifically. The board finds that Jersey Mikes would generate too much noise. And may emanate too many odors and create too many refuse disturbances for neighboring residents. The case made by developers and landlords during COVID went along the lines. We need to loosen restrictions for restaurants, or commercial properties will become unviable, and the town will die. At the time vacancy rates. At the time vacancy rates were over 15% and the TC has ceded to their request. Fast forward three years, vacancy rates are extremely low. Not a single restaurant has moved into the B2 or B3 where one did not already exist and the town has not died. In fact, just the opposite. And in case anyone thinks we are against restaurants, rest assured that is not the case. We support local restaurants, just not when they negatively impact the quality of life for residents. And last year alone, we've been to the following restaurants. Jack's Joey's Binix, Camelot the Standard, Evil and Lemon Cafe, Monet, Saigon Cafe, Basilica, La Pergola, Lastrada, Fiama, Mariachi, Milburn Deli, The Bagel Pantry, The Solid House, Sunny Scrambled, Boxcar and Enzos, to name a few. The latest Sid budget is being funded more and more from resident taxpayer dollars and as such, needs to recognize the concerns of residents. A couple of years, I suggested that then Committee Wosserman that the Sid encouraged businesses to be good neighbors and suggested the idea of a good neighbor designation for good businesses. He suggested I meet with Mr. Grillo to discuss, which I did. Mr. Grillo was not impressed with the idea. He said, businesses are here to make money, especially along Morris Turnpike. Many in fact are national chains with no interest in the community and employees that were not town residents. And I'll give an example of this. Around 2019, and I think Mayor Lieberberg, you may remember this, the fence separating the AT&T store and the residential properties behind had fallen down, decayed and fallen down, and it became a cut through. Despite repeated attempts to get the property owner to repair, they refused. We raised it to zoning enforcement and nothing happened. Finally, we raised it at a TC meeting and it, and even then it took over a year, a citation and a second mayor to finally get the fence fixed. In summary, I am not here to vilify the Sid or any individual or many of the fine businesses we have in town. The Sid has done many good things and I hope it will continue to do so. However, advocating for restaurants in the backyards of residents is not one of them. This only serves to enhance the wealth of commercial property owners at the expense of residential property owners and their quality of life. I request this board come out with a statement expressly stating that it has no intention of pursuing this any further and commit to supporting goal one, objective one of the master plan. And with that, I want to thank you all and wish you a safe, enjoy this holiday season. And if you have no questions, I'll be gone.
Thank you, Mr. Morielli.
Thank you.
Jay, can you leave that?
Or, or can you email, can you email it so we can put it in the record?
Sure.
I, I, I wanna be able to answer the question. So I just wanna have.
Okay.
No, no, I'm gonna.
I'm going to the affordable housing session. Thank you for the time tonight. Have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Vicky Powell. Couple things. The business permits, you know, they're going out. Is there any way that we can try to enforce it? I mean, there's so much parking from the manicure salons, the restaurants and all that stuff on the street in the back parking lots. I mean, don't we wanna know where these businesses that have employees are parking their cars? Well, I wanna know what other towns do, because I think Summit has their own like business permit lot and they encourage the people. We have to get a little stronger with this. It's ridiculous. I mean, I can, all day long on a Saturday, I see a truck from a hair salon park there all day long. I mean, that's taking spots away and, and it's, it's not getting better. It's getting worse. And there's no enforcement, but we have to come up with an idea. I have a parking lot, so I have a parking, but when I was in, across the street, I bought a business permit. But there's tons of stores that don't have a parking lot. Where are they parking? Why aren't we finding out where they're parking? Why are we making rules for them to park? They have to, they have to buy, they have to have parking and they have to buy a permit. I mean, it's, it's cheap. You can pay it in four installments. You can't make it any more easier than it is. It wasn't like that when, you know, you had to pay the money out, but it's, it's easy. But we have to enforce it. It's not getting better and it's, it's really bad. That's one thing. Two, there's a sticker on the mural. Somebody post, put a sticker on the mural, so I'm, I'm afraid, I don't know how you have to pull it off. I hate to tell you that, Steve. And then last, I just wanna thank Tracy for all her hard work. I'm sad that you're leaving because you really were a great advocate for the Sid and you did a great job. I hope we get to see you around town still at all the events, but I just wanna thank you. You really did a great job. And congratulations on the budget. Thank you.
Nobody on Zoom. Okay. Vicky, I, I hear you loud and clear about this. I think it's something that, I know, Steve, you said on the ad hoc parking committee, I don't know where this should go, but it should for 2026. Maybe businesses need to get a letter or, or the, you know, just be told that please be advised that in 2010, I don't know from the township committee, the township rather, Ben, that please be advised that beginning in 2026, parking permitted, parking code, parking restrictions and must, will, will be enforced and maybe give them a brief. I'm sorry, 2025. 2025. Beginning in 25.
Because I'll, I'll answer the parking question.
I couldn't, I could not agree more with Vicky and Jackie that. And you would think businesses, it's in their own best economic interest to not park where their customers are gonna park. I mean, it's a direct correlation of, once I drive around two or three times, you know. Even though now we have the, the parking deck and I always park in the parking deck now. And I need more education on the parking deck as well, but that's good parking, but no one should leave a Jeep parked in front of their salon. And I know exactly what you're talking about.
Right.
Or, or, or their car in front of the whole day because it does jam up the businesses for potential customers.
So parking continues to be an issue in this town. I think it's gotten better in the macro. We've added a lot of parking spaces. We've created a lot more flexibility in terms of timing. We tried to relieve, alleviate a lot of gridlock at choke points by, by changing parking. What it comes down to, and I think this actually dovetails into Mr. Morielli's comments, which is, and I've said this so many times, the Sid is not a regulatory body, right? So Mr. Morielli cited the Township Committee and the Zoning Board, right? They're the ones that make the decisions, not us. We can certainly help, but we don't get to pass an ordinance or, or make a formal decision. Same thing comes with parking. Yes, I'm on the parking committee, but the Township Committee is the one that can change the ordinance related to parking. All parking in the town is ordinance-driven, right? And so unless the Township Committee decides to change ordinance, nothing changes, right? And so, you know, Jackie, to your point, let's just use it as a hypothetical. There's no enforcement mechanism today for a business to actually get the parking permits. We ask them to and it makes their life easier because they don't have to worry about getting a ticket. But if you say, well, I don't care, I'm not gonna do it, there's no, there's nothing stopping you. We don't have a system where every business has to come and either pay or get some exemption, right? There's nothing codified that explains whether you can get exemption or not or pay or not. Some people don't need it because they have their own private parking. Others don't. It's, it's a very unique situation for every single business and I think, I think the Township Committee needs to revisit the parking enforcement and parking ordinances. I think, as Vicky said, we've made it as simple as you can over the last two years to, to park in this town. We've created the shopper parking program. We've created the quarterly payment program because we know we have a lot of temporary workers who were not buying a full year's permit, so they just weren't buying any permit. We said, okay, now you can buy it for, for a quarter. We've done, I think, everything we can in terms of making it easy to purchase parking, but there's still people who just don't follow the rules. I think an additional thing, and this is just a recommendation to Ben in the TC is, I do think we need more parking enforcement officers. I was in Lot One yesterday. It was lunchtime. Paper Mill was having a show. It was like Deadwood. I mean, it was the Wild West. There was cars everywhere.
Right.
And there was no parking enforcement agent because there's only one. And I ended up seeing her actually later on at the Short Hills train station. There's one at a time generally, but, so I'm seeing, you know, they can't be everywhere. And we have, it's a free-for-all when, when town is thriving, right? And so I think we, we need to invest in more parking violations officers so we have more bodies and it can be a safer place. And I think, I think that would be my main recommendation.
Well, there's some things that we're doing too through technology that are, that's gonna be announced shortly. Using, using, it's gonna, I should say, multiply the number of eyes on parking tremendously. Yeah, using technology. So that should help out a lot too.
Drones?
No drones.
Yeah, mine too.
Yeah.
But by using technology cameras, I'm not sure if you've heard about it yet, but.
I haven't, but I can tell you another thing that came up, which I think is interesting. We were approached, I was approached by a, a large business in town, about 80 employees. They have about 40 parking passes they have to buy. It's expensive. And even when you can do the shared pass, right, for five license plates per, that still requires that only one of those cars on each pass can be there at a given time, right? So this, this becomes quite a large number that you have to spend towards parking. And they presented the idea of basically a wholesale program, right, to say, if we buy a certain number, there's a discount. And Alex and I had talked about another incentive maybe to try to say, well, if you, if we give you that incentive, you have to park in the parking deck, which we know is underutilized, right? And so, you know, we're very proactive in trying to mitigate this. That again would be the kind of thing that would come to the TC and you'd have to amend an ordinance. But, you know, I think, again, talking about how we can work collaboratively, Richard, give us ideas. Write to me. Tell me if you see something because it allows me and Alex and the parking committee to have open discussions about it.
Yeah, it, it really comes down to enforcement and, you know, somebody just can't park there for eight hours. I'll run it and I, you know how much time I spend in town. I drive by, it's always there. So not singling any few people out, but, you know, it does need to be looked at. And I think part of the technology that we're bringing to town will help. And also, you know, opening up the, the commuter lots on the weekend, you know, is, is very helpful, but we have to educate as well.
Right. And I'd also recommend the parking deck keeping in mind the vacancy of the parking deck because if there's still, you know, if there's still a lot of space there, that'd be interesting. It'd, it'd be interesting for Ben maybe to look at if there's space at the parking deck and, and there are businesses that, that have an abundant number of employees. Maybe you could offer a discount for X number and have the, and have them park at the upper level of the parking deck or something.
A couple forty-dollar tickets solves a lot of.
Yeah, that's true.
So, you know. They figure, figure it out.
Yeah.
Right. And that is my report published.
I, I would also like to ask if the township can maybe have some kind of warning citation or something to these, because if somebody gets a, a warning once or twice, the third time, there's, I, I'd add that to the mechanism, if you would. Yeah.
I, I think, I know some towns do that where, where the first time, here's a warning and now there's a, now there's a record of it.
Right. And then the second time, there's a fine. And, and, and you know what? That fine, you would have, it would have paid for your parking pass. And I think, I think we all know some of, who some of the perpetrators are. And I guess the other thing is if this is not parking enforcement, maybe this is something that the police department has to do or somebody should just, once upon a time, we talked about an auxiliary police force. This would be one of the things that they would be doing, but.
Yeah, well, it's under, it's, it's, the technology's coming, some good technology coming, it will help. And I don't even think the rest of the boards, the TC's privy to it yet, so, you know, we're gonna talk with Alex and work on a few things.
Great.
It's coming. But also too, and I say this at all the TC meetings, I say it on my, my turnwinds, the messages, you know, shop local, eat local and drive safely because, you know, as well as children out, you know, holiday is coming. So I always like to reiterate, people need to slow down. This isn't the Indianapolis 500 on Milburn Avenue. As opposed to double parking.
The other thing tonight that I experienced at 5:30, there was cars just sitting in parking spaces with their lights on and I think they were either Uber or, or just, you know, just sitting in a parking space. Because they, they didn't have any other place to go, so, or, or didn't, I, I know there's some areas that have been designated as waiting stations, but at 5:30 on a Thursday night.
Where, where was it?
Right in Lot One. Lot One, with their lights on. Just in, in the, you know, on the phone. Talking, so. Once again, you know, to Vicky's point, you know, I, I, I knew I had to come here. I had a circle. I ended up parking on. But, but that's, they shouldn't be allowed or, you know, certainly not.
It's a little bit of overreach if somebody's on their phone waiting for.
No, but it was for a half an hour. I, because I, I waited.
We were more patient than I am driving around for a half hour.
Right.
So, okay. To be continued, the parking. Okay, well, well, I, I just wanna say, this is Tracy Katz Levine's last Explore Milburn Short Hills meeting. And I for one am very sad about it. I understand. I understand that you are moving on, but Richard and I and Steve have been part of this organization since its inception. And you were a quote-unquote founding, founding board member through all our trials, trepidations, ups, downs, COVID, IDA. You have been a rock. And I am forever grateful for all the things you've done for Explore, for our community, for residents, for businesses. I, 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 I just want you to know from, I'll speak for myself and Richard and Steve, Steve, Amanda, anybody else, if you'd like to add, but it's been a pleasure to serve alongside of you. I, we are each other's sounding boards. We agree, we don't agree, we, we, we convalesce, we, we look at it. I, I think always in the spirit of improving, making things better and trying to see things from all sides and, and I also wanna comment, you know, during the, the October, the day after October 7th, you really stepped up as a, as a community leader. And I am very grateful on so many levels. So this is a little something for you from us. And, and I just wanna thank, thank you.
Why don't you present it to her here?
Okay, yep. Which is the, the whole board. Let's, let's get up. This is a photo, a Town Hall Plaza with, with myself and the mayor. And it says, Tracy Katz Levine, Explore Milburn Short Hills Board and Executive Committee Member 2020 to 2024. A leader for Explore, a champion for Milburn and a gift to our community. So you are all those things. Come up, come up, everybody. We'll do a photo. Yep. Richard, would you like to say a few words?
I, you, you kind of, Chair, you kind of said everything, but I, I also, I also wanna tell Tracy how grateful, how grateful I am.
I'll be the sound guy.
I wanna tell you, you know, when we started, when, when we started Explore, when we started Explore, we were, it was really challenging. You know, it was a bad time, you know, it was a challenging time. It was COVID. There was a lot of things going on. And Jackie and I, you know, and, and Steve and others, we were really looking for people to step up, to come forward, to help us. And Tracy was right there, right there with us from the beginning. And, and I just wanna say that the one thing she did that, that was incredible was she kept our standards way high. I was like, you know, we were always like, well, maybe we could do this. No, you're not gonna do that. You're gonna do this. And she always kept our standards so high and, and really we are so grateful for everything you do for, for Explore and for the town. But thank you.
You know, he could have just sat back down and used the mic.
You know, he could have just sat back down and used the mic.
I I would just like to say two things that Tracy did that changed this organization for the better. That website exists because of Tracy. She put in so much work. And also, when I said this before, the day after Hurricane Ida, Tracy was the one that organized the GoFundMe that ended up collecting over two hundred thousand dollars. So while myself and and Marla were out in the street trying to help businesses, Tracy was, you know, behind the scenes setting that up and and created an incredible fund. And so I'll always remember that. Amazing work. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you all so much. So I have a few thoughts I wanted to share. Is that okay?
Yes, yes.
Because it really has been a wonderful journey. So I guess if you guys will indulge me a little bit, I wanted to share some thoughts with the group. And it's something I also want to share with our current and incoming township committee members and anyone else who might be interested. It's my thoughts. My reflections on being a volunteer through these past years. So, okay. So as I wrap up these four and a half very meaningful years as a board member of Explore Melbourne Short Hills, I want like to share some both some candid suggestions and positive reflections of this time. So I'm a twenty eight year resident and our special town was a key draw to our moving here and raising our kids here. I'm a longtime small business advocate in my professional career and locally leading a Melbourne think tank and grassroots shop Melbourne marketing campaign after the former Sid disbanded. And therefore, I was inspired to volunteer for the much needed new special improvement district when this launched, thanks to to you in twenty twenty. I am not a politically focused person. And until that point, honestly, I had been hesitant to serve on a municipal committee because I'm a very action oriented, ethical, efficient person. And I was concerned about the bureaucracy and I heard about political dealings that are sometimes associated with such roles. But seeing the rising vacancies in Melbourne at that time and new businesses flocking to surrounding towns and not ours, I was compelled to take action. So I am very proud to have been a founding and continuing resident member of the board. And launching, you know, in that role, I too was thinking about the Hurricane Ida campaign that helped our seventy five businesses stay open and conceiving of lots of new programs and initiatives. And I've been just really energized by the board and the advisory council and the business owners like you, Vicky, that I've gotten to work with, who work so hard for the good of our town. One of the best steps we took was hiring Steve as our executive director, the perfect seasoned driven professional to bring our vision and mission to life in conjunction with Amanda, our amazing marketing director. And they both work truly tirelessly for our community. It it really is beyond expectations and a great partnership with Alex and Tim and Christine, our DPW and our township professional staff. So thank you to all of you. Since the Sid launch, vacancy vacancy rates have dropped to less than five percent. While thousands of residents and visitors, as we heard, enjoy year round Explorer events and patronizing Melbourne Short Hills businesses. We received continual gratitude from Sid members, such as those that turned out for the budget meeting on the benefits they gained from the marketing PR, the training programs, the direct guidance. And in addition, the quantitative impact is measured through the surveys and the KPIs. So I appreciate the largely positive motives and hard work by our elected officials, our township professionals and volunteers. So that said, demonstrating a greater level of trust and respect for volunteer boards and committee members, I think is key to attracting more volunteers and ensuring their success. So I wanted to just share six constructive insights I have, again, based on my experience, to help our elected officials and community members better understand how to motivate more people to set up, to step up. So first, related to our township committee, a huge thanks to the mayor and the TC members who had the foresight and the drive to launch the new Sid in twenty twenty. And the TC members who have subsequently supported the Sid budget and initiatives. We have a few of those wonderful individuals here over the past four and a half years and been key partners of driving success. Jackie, Mayor Romano, Richard, Ben. It's been really terrific working together on the board. And most recently, Ben, you've brought the fresh perspective and the KPIs to us, which has been so valuable and truly worked collaboratively with the board and the professional staff to integrate this into our culture. In contrast, it was surprising and disappointing when other TC members who had not engaged directly with the Sid suddenly suggested major changes to the Sid. So I encouraged township committee members who were not as knowledgeable about the Sid to take the time to attend meetings, talk directly with the board and engage with the Explore professionals and active business members, especially before recommending changes. This will help us all achieve even greater impact. Diversity of thought on a committee is greatly beneficial. It's been so valuable to have new perspectives as new members have joined the board and the advisory committee. However, it was disheartening when individuals who actively tried to derail and even shut down the Sid were suggested as potential committee members. Please focus on enlisting committee members who embrace the mission and vision of the organization, not people who are opposed to the organization. For our community members, I encourage them to keep an eye on the big picture and to please try to think twice before trying to derail initiatives that benefit our community. For example, I'm still really baffled about why community members wrote letters to try to prevent the approval of the Main Street New Jersey application. A status that was thankfully awarded that opens up, as we heard, a wealth of resources and the opportunity for tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants. This energy could be redirected in much more productive and positive directions. Assume that volunteers are honest and well intentioned. Please don't make false statements, repeat quotes out of context or defame committee members. Are a small number of very vocal opponents of the Sid who have repeatedly done these things. Repeating the same things over and over in different ways does not make them true. I have been unjustifiably personally insulted by some of these individuals, and it's not respectful and it deters people from volunteering. Number five, the lack of a true objective local news source in our town leads to rampant misinformation. I would love to know if anyone else has ideas on this. I have personally reached out to the village queen to beg them to add Melbourne Short Hills to their coverage area. Moncler Moncler Local, just another example, just received a hundred thousand dollar press forward grant to help enhance their local coverage. So I encourage us all to look into ideas of how to address this huge gap. And lastly, just a message again for the community of be part of the change you want to see. People love to complain, often anonymously on social media, about the things that frustrate them in town. Instead, I encourage people to be proactive and take action, be constructive in proposing solutions and join committees to drive change. So in summary, please trust and respect volunteers like me so that more people will step up. So more importantly, or equally important, would like to reflect on overall incredibly positive experiences. I've met amazing people on the board and advisory committee that I otherwise would never have met, including Stephen, Michael. I mean, we have worked together, as you said, since the start. Vicky, Lex, and many others. We are from diverse backgrounds and roles, and we were brought together by a common love of our town. And I have truly enjoyed meeting and working with all of you. As I've said, Stephen and Amanda are treasures to our town. They go way above and beyond every day. In today's economy, the strength of a Sid is its professionals. So I want us all to recognize how lucky we are. I have learned so much from both of you. So thank you for being open to my many ideas. And hopefully I haven't driven you too crazy and bringing them to life so beautifully. Our businesses are amazing. I have met and patronized so many wonderful local businesses across the Sid, shopping, dining, professional services, medical care, kids enrichment, fitness, health, wellness, unique experiences and more. I am especially grateful to those business owners who volunteer for the Sid Board Advisory Committee and Event Committees in addition to keeping their own businesses running, which we know is not easy work. Our businesses truly elevate life locally and enable community members and visitors to live better in big and small ways. So please patronize our five hundred plus businesses. We have made huge strides in under five years, with vacancies down from seventeen percent to less than five percent. More than a hundred and twenty new businesses opening across exciting categories, events and programs that bring thousands of people from town and other communities to Melbourne Short Hills. There's robust engagement across all five districts. With the increased budget for twenty twenty five, the Main Street New Jersey designation and the right professionals and volunteers, Explore Melbourne Short Hills will continue to bring our town to new heights. I definitely look forward to continuing to be involved as a volunteer and community member. So thank you again to my past and current co-board members, our township leaders and professionals and our Sid professionals and volunteers for a really great experience and for all you do. I'm really like ready to cry.
Okay, back to business.
We do have business to do.
The one the one thing I want to say about Tracy is on my first day, she said, please call me if you have any questions. She didn't think I'd actually call. But you're very helpful. Thank you so much.
Ms. Levine, we would like you to read the motion to go into executive session.
The last one.
Yeah, okay, here goes Resolution twenty four oh oh six, authorizing executive session for the Melbourne Short Hills Business Organization. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act provides for the exclusion of the public during the discussion of certain matters and whereas prior to the exclusion of the public, it is required that the Board of Trustees adopt a resolution stating the general nature of the subject to be discussed and stating as precisely as possible the time when the minutes of the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public. And whereas this body is about to consider a matter which falls within the purview of NJSA ten, four through twelve, and can probably properly exclude the public from such discussions. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Melbourne Short Hills Business Organization and Board of Trustees shall enter into a closed session to consider the following: contract discussions for Cooper LLC and Black River Design Company. It is further resolved, the minutes of said discussions shall be made public as soon as the matter under discussion is no longer of a confidential nature. I hereby I hereby serve by, I guess we have to vote first. I can't say that yet.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need a motion to go into executive.
So moved. They have a second. Second, okay. Okay, we will now go into closed session. Do we need to vote? May we have a voice vote to go into closed session?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, closed session.
Okay, we are now returning from our executive closed session. May I have a motion to approve the Cooper?
You need to make a motion to go back into open.
May I have a motion to return back into open session?
Motion.
May have a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. May I have a motion to approve Cooper LLC 2025 contract for renewal at the same rate of 14,400 for an annual contract payable 1,200 per month for a calendar year of 12 months?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Secondly, may I have a motion to approve the authorization of the executive director and legal counsel to amend the 2025 contract for Black River Design Company? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we are officially...
To adjourn.
No, we have a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you for an awesome 2025.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. We will see you all on January 23rd, 2025. Thank you so much.